It being approximately 7:00 PM, I'd like to call the planning board to order. First on the agenda this evening is review of all the new business planners report.
It's me.
The birthday girl.
Thanks. So first item on the report tonight is that we have a new building commissioner. I wrote new because he's actually been around what, three months now? But Scott, you want to come on up and...
Oh, I guess.
He was going to attend the meeting so that he could be, you know, listening to the marijuana discussion and the childcare discussion and so figured it'd be a good time to bring him forward and let you guys grill him, I mean, talk to him and see if there was anything you... But so far Scott's been here since what, January 24th?
Yep.
And you want to just tell him a little bit about where you came from and how it's been?
They don't have enough time. I came from Marion-Wayham border. I've been working in Marion for 22 and a half years. I started off in the DPW, worked my way up to become the local inspector, then I transitioned into the building commissioner where I held that position for about 12 years. Been in construction for about 35 plus years, showing my age, sorry. Other than that, everything is the same. Wake up, go to work, and go home.
Yep, kind of what we all do.
Exactly.
What interested you about Foxborough?
I think the size and the challenge. It's not very humongous, like city-wise, but it's a quaint town, but it's bigger than Marion. Marion is about 6,000 year-round residents, but it jumps up to about 35,000 in the summer. I'm exaggerating, it's probably 25,000, but... So it gets quite busy in the summer, but I look forward to the challenge and when I saw it, I jumped on it. Sometimes you just outgrow the town you're in and I felt there was a change at that time.
Awesome, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of new development that's going to be happening in Foxborough. Most of the properties are pretty much used up at this point. There is some creative things that are coming forward. Your biggest challenge or excitement may be the Kraft Group and the stadium because it's...
He's met them.
Yeah, it's a never-ending, evolving machine.
Why don't you tell them about the building permits that have been pulled since you got here?
Yeah, we've had several building permits that have been pulled. Building K just finished up with the Dana Fibers. We just finished that up. We just did our final inspection on that. I still have to do a little walkthrough when they get the furniture in and just to really close that out. Also under Building K, they're doing like a fit-out right now, so they're just doing like a separation wall with bathrooms on the other side and then the new tenant's going to come in and pull their permits. I think one of them is Sugar, which is a candy, candy, candy store or something like that, so they'll be coming in soon. Then there's Building P, which is the four-story building. That's got my hands full quite a bit. And then they threw in North End Zone. So we're doing pretty well, bringing in permit fees and stuff like that on that, but it's been, it's been a challenge going up there. I'm pretty much living up there. The first couple, couple of days it was like, ooh, Gillette Stadium, and the third time it was like, ah, Gillette Stadium.
Well, usually when I see him by 10:00 AM, he's like, I have 4,000 steps in already. I just left the stadium, I already have 4,000 steps, so...
And that's up ladders.
Yep.
They finally put in stairs, but they're staging stairs. They're no easier than that ladder.
No, not at all.
So I'm kind of getting my steps in and losing that weight, so there we go.
And he has been, it's been a little challenge because the local inspector is on leave, so he's been working with a part-time inspector that, so he's pretty much single-handedly doing it. And we're having a unique problem with all the signs, the temporary, you know, all the lawn signs that everybody's putting in for like the different commercial enterprises and then some of the elections all over like town property and so Scott's been chasing those, trying to keep that clear.
Just to let you know, I am the sign police.
She will gladly come and help you?
No, I actually messaged a couple people to say you can't put them...
That's helpful.
...there. You need to pull them in or they're going to be taken and I know they're expensive.
Because we assume a lot of people don't know, like particularly the candidates, you know, they might have friends or family just out there and it's like, why wouldn't you just put them all over the common? That's the best place to put them. But then, you know, it's like, okay, you know, obviously if everybody did that, it would be a bit cluttered, so...
I think there's mass general law that prohibits any political signs on, on public property.
Correct.
But some people just don't realize where their lot line ends and we've been having that problem. So we've been, I got a truck full of cut signs. So I have sent out some emails and a letter to a couple of contractors that put up their signs and slowly I see them disappearing, which is a good thing. The ones that I told you on Central Street?
They're gone?
I asked Brendan, I was like, did you pick them up? And he goes, oh, no. I was like, they're gone.
Because they were there yesterday, because I too was like, it's too dangerous to pull over and get them.
I was like, I'm going to get creamed trying to take these.
Yeah, yeah. So it's amazing the time, like I keep telling him, like there's been a lot of unique challenges that have come up since I've only been back a month and I'm like, it's not always like this, I promise, but I'm sounding like a broken record, it's been a little... He's been supporting the ZBA, they have, you know, some unique cases going on and so there's just been a lot.
Doing my job, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, so it's been good though, I think you didn't have any time for nerves, so just run, so...
Run, just, it was like, don't, don't get too comfortable in that seat, just keep going. Just run, run, run. So, but we're trying to work out the bugs on the People GIS too. Lisa's been a huge help on that. She found a couple of things today that we're clearing up.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys know, but building is all online permitting now, it's electronic permits. It has been for a couple of years now, but there was a software update a couple of years ago and, not a couple of years, a couple of months ago, sorry, and it's just been a little bit of a, little glitchy.
It was done in December and it just, there's so many glitches, so we're working through those glitches, trying to get it cleared up and we're finding some, some permits were actually deleted that shouldn't have been deleted and we're getting them back, so we're trying to, we're trying to clean things up. I think Lisa found one today for the Shovel Town. We never had the sprinkler system approved, but now it's in. That was a $1,000 permit right there, so, I mean, it's minor money, but still it's...
It all adds up.
But still, but still too, it has to get seen and it's got to get reviewed, have the proper review and then get the inspections, so we don't want, it's a safety thing. We need to make sure that we're doing our jobs and our due diligence.
Yeah, well, can't you request the review after, even though it's already installed?
Yeah, and that's what we're doing on this one because they're, they pretty much have it done right now. We had the tier-one documents, but they were never like really reviewed, had the proper review. Now we need to tier-two documents and do the final acceptance, but they still got a little ways to go.
Yeah.
So I got a little, little retrieve right there.
Yeah, they were a little behind schedule.
Working on it. The good news is we're meeting with them, not next week, I don't think, because it's school vacation week, but the week after, to start talking about the parking plan to start, which we're going to be kicking off, I mentioned in my last update, we're going to be kicking off an uptown parking plan process. So, but they contacted us saying, hey, can we talk about it? So we figure we'll meet with them, get that dialogue going with them and then we're going to start rolling it out. You know, I was thinking of that today about stakeholder involvement, you know, letting everybody uptown know, putting it all over Facebook, getting like surveys, or not surveys per se, but you know, input, a way to get input, because we're going to have a proposal, so anyway, that's coming up. Oh, here comes Jeff.
All right. Awesome job.
All right, now you're done.
Thank you. Don't have to dance. No, no, only if you want to.
It's very nice to meet you. We're thrilled you're here.
We've got the good work.
I do have to say that while Paige was on medical leave, it was a pleasure working with Scott because it was, it was difficult and it was great to have a great working relationship with the building commissioner, so we really appreciate it.
So if Gabby likes you, then you're in.
She was unbelievable when Paige was gone as well, so...
Yeah, she did a phenomenal job.
I could leave.
No.
You told me I'm not going, you're not going.
Thank you.
All right, so then on to temporary outdoor downing, just so you know, we're starting that up again, we have started up again, so we already have two applications, unions draw on the commons.
$7,500 a piece?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
No, we do it free here in Foxborough. So we anticipate interest, oh no, skipjacks too, so we got a third one today, so we've had three. So it's starting up and Scott's getting rolled into that process, learning about that. I think we did 17 last year, so I anticipate we'll have, you know, numerous this next year, this year as well.
Yeah, I think everybody really enjoyed having it, even though last year was much more crucial to their survival, now it's going to be just an option.
Yeah.
Do you think we'll ever look at possibly increasing seat count if they're going to do indoor and outdoor dining for certain parts of the year or not?
We have it on our, we have the zoning bylaw, so next year we will be looking at it on planning board review and we can look at parking. And we did warn in the letter that we sent out last week and letting them know we were opening up the program again, we said, just to give you fair warning, we did adopt a zoning bylaw for permanent outdoor provisions, but this year we're going to stick with temporary because the state did and we can do it, but plan ahead because, yeah, that could take, you know, three months, so you don't want them, you know, people thinking about it next May, you want them thinking about it next January, so we can, we have time to review everything and look at parking and it's really, I think when we talked about during the zoning, it's really case by case. You know, some parking lots have ample and you don't really worry as much, others, you don't, you can't afford to give up any spaces on peak times, so...
Isn't that also really a border out issue on discharge?
It's both border out, building, and power company. All three entities really along the plan in the parking that we need to sit there and look at this and really delve into it and make sure that the safety of the public's in that hand, so...
Okay. We just applied for, on Monday, I applied for a grant in excess of $5 million through Congressman Jacoben Claus's office. It's under the community project funding. We did get funded last year, I think, you know, we were very thrilled, we got $2 million in funding and that was awesome. The problem was is that when it got back to Congress, you know, and then they all agreed not to fund any community projects for any congressman, so we all got, so this time we're hopeful that it progresses. I did work with his aide and I said, you know, we have the sewer, in addition to the signal, can we just throw it all in there? And she said, throw it in and we'll, we'll look at it. So we made the case for the whole thing and, you know, we're kind of hoping to get like a chunk from them, you know, a chunk from the state and you kind of, you start to piece this together, because 5 million is kind of big for anybody to ask for, but it does have good bones, so we're hopeful. So I hope to hear back from them, because I remember last year, they get into detailed questions and you start answering more and more questions. But last year we ranked two, like we were second on his list of projects, so we, I'm hopeful that we are right up there again. And I think the other project was his, like a Newton one that, you know, he lives in Newton, so I get it. Walnut Street is continuing to progress, that Housing Authority project, a community meeting, we have not yet notified a butters or anything yet, but a community meeting on the proposed project that the developer's going to be there and answering questions and starting to engage with the neighbors a bit. That is being held May 11th at 6:00 PM, so stay tuned for more information on that. The Moore Street Lip Project, as you know, that made it through the state process and right now Diana reports that June 30th is the tentative date of the public hearing for that. They're anticipating they'll file, what, mid-May, mid or late May or something? Yeah, so we're targeting, Barney's targeting June 30th for that hearing on the Moore Street Lip. MBTA Communities Housing Choice Update, I had to present, as required by the state, I had to present to the Board of Selectmen Tuesday night. We have to submit our, our sponsor form to them by May 2nd, which I will do. And then I volunteered this board Tuesday night to work with the selectmen on the next steps, because we all know this housing choice thing is a big deal and it's not something that's embraced by Foxborough, we all know that, but I don't think it's like me or a real Keegan who should be deciding whether Foxborough is going to comply with the law or not. So it's really, you know, maybe it's the planning board and the Board of Selectmen having a conversation, I don't know how you engage, but it's a community decision. So we figured July or August is when the new guidelines will come out, they just finished the draft and the comment period and now that, when we see what they're actually saying, then we'll reconvene with the two boards and start a dialogue as to how the town's going to respond, so stay tuned for that. Regional Tourism Update, I can announce that we got an $80,000 grant from the Mass Office of Tourism, Travel and Tourism, so that's awesome. We can get professional photography and videography and some real, actual like social media search engine stuff that's above my pay grade, but it's a big deal and we do think the Gaming Commission might fund us even further. So now we're starting to look at ways to make this revenue generating so that it can sustain itself, you know, whether it's they're selling ads for the advertisements and whatnot, again, things I don't really know about, but it, you know, we want to get to the point where we're not using grant funds and the program actually funds itself. But the big three are thrilled, like the Elton Mall and the casino and all of them, they're responding now, because now, you know, we're not talking little grants now, we're talking 80,000. I'm pretty sure like we're going to be requesting like 150,000 from the Mass Gaming Commission, so this is like getting real, like where you might see commercials, so it's cool. And then the 495 Metro West Partnership, folks around here probably don't hear about them much, but I work with them a lot. They do sort of that intermingling of public-private partnership, they kind of help understand the business community and navigate waters and I sit on their Board of Directors and they do a lot of great work and one of the things they have right now is a survey open, so for any Foxborough businesses, please go to the 495 Partnership website and fill out their survey, because it really helps inform, we get a fact sheet on like Foxborough Business, the state of affair, and it's really a cool data point every year, and the more Foxborough engages, the more valuable that information is, so it's just helpful to sort of see what's going on. And it's in partnership with Framingham State University, so it's legit. And then lastly, just a reminder, that town meeting is scheduled for May 9th at 7:30 PM. And we don't have any articles on there, but the marijuana article is on there at the end.
Okay, thank you. Action items, minutes from March 24th and April 7th.
April 7th doesn't exist yet, but March 24th I sent out yesterday.
I read them. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, anything with active subdivisions, Gabby?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, we have...
Three minutes?
Three minutes to go.
What about dancing?
Actually, for active subdivisions, I just remembered, I am going to be doing a site walk at the end of the month, doing, checking the limit of clearing for the Phase Two of Lawson Farm, so the back portion of Lawson Farm, so that's, that's moving forward.
Well, that's good.
Now what exactly is happening there? From what I understand, Mr. Bonvie is selling off a bunch of the lots?
That's, that's what I've heard, you know, he's going to be doing the, the site work, so the, the lane and the road and all the infrastructure that's necessary and then, yeah, selling, I understand it's selling some of the lots for other developers to build.
Come on, we've got two more minutes.
We could sing to Paige.
Please.
She said please.
You don't want me to sing.
I guess I got to put a little bit later after all.
Would you like to go on and come back?
Jeff, did you notice that Sotiris from...
Little past the week today.
Which one?
Little near.
Did she really? No kidding?
Yeah, she had...
Is it Paul Wadia?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they moved it to McCollum and she...
I don't know when it's going in.
She went to the hospital.
Haven't even asked. Not a good dog.
I just found out. Little Sotiris. No, I didn't think you'd know her. 15 seconds.
I don't know that for a fact.
You're good to go.
Okay. You might be able to sign in too. Okay. I would like to ask everybody that's come in, that if you're not a Foxborough resident, if you could sign in, please?
Even for all Foxborough residents as well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Making up all new rules.
Where's the, we have a signing seat over there?
Yeah, it's passing.
Okay, okay. All right, so it being 7:20 PM, public hearing warrant article, code of the town of Foxborough, section 162.7 and zoning bylaws 7.5, amend the code of Foxborough Town restricting and deleting sections 162.7 and 275-7.5.8 and amend the zoning bylaws by adding new section 6.7, 7.6, marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers and amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new map entitled Marijuana Overlay District, Foxborough, Mass. as, excuse me, Attachment 6. I am going to recuse myself from this portion of the hearing, Tracy will be taking over.
Thank you. Paige?
Yes, so this is a public hearing in support of an article that's on town meeting floor this spring, the town meeting scheduled for May 9th. Just a little background that seems to provide some good context, the town of Foxborough was approached by some marijuana people, people in the business and they were looking into whether the town of Foxborough would reconsider their ban on marijuana. They presented some information about sort of the financial benefits and pointed out that many towns around Foxborough are currently selling marijuana and having minimal impact, so that was presented. They were, they let us know that they were intending to file a citizen petition or a petition, you know, a landowner petition, to seek this out. At that point, it was advised that it might not be wise to have a single petitioner do that, because there's no guarantee that the person who changes and writes the zoning and changes it is going to be the one who ultimately gets a license from the Cannabis Control Commission. So at that point, the selectmen took it under advisement and they decided to put it on the warrant to allow the townspeople of Foxborough to decide whether this is a, something that the town wants to consider. So that's kind of the background, there's really no real agenda, like the town doesn't necessarily have any skin in the game except what I'll go through, but that's where this came from and why it's being reconsidered. So here's the timeline, we have a slideshow up here. As you know, well, as you may recall, in 2008, mass voters voted to decriminalize marijuana and then they went on to legalize medical marijuana, recreational marijuana. In May of 2017, Foxborough banned recreational marijuana and then in 2018 was when the first marijuana retailers opened up in Massachusetts. We probably all remember the lines and the, you know, all the news reports and what's not, whatnot. So why are we changing it now? We, back in 2017, it was actually passed when there weren't even any regulations out. If you recall, it was a citizen or some sort of petition that got it passed, so the state had to quickly catch up and implement regulations to support this new law that went into effect. So at the time, Foxborough wasn't certain, no one really knew what was coming and there was a lot of fear around the marijuana and what the impacts would be. Since now, you know, we discussed, it's been legal for a while now and we're starting to see them come, here's some nearby marijuana retailers, Sharon had one open in August 2020, Plainville in February 21, and Mansfield is in October 2021. And that, in fact, I didn't notice it till recently that it's right over by White's Bakery, it's actually in a retail plaza. The big joke is it went from Orange Leaf to Relief, is apparently the name of it, so it's kind of funny, but I had no idea, you know, when I was there, that that was what it was. So at that point, you know, obviously there was a little concern around it, I mean, why would we ever even consider this? The first inclination even by the police chief, you know, when we brought it up, was hard no. But then the research was done, Brookline was one of the first towns that had a dispensary opened, so they actually came out, the member of the police department came out and met with the selectman, town manager, police chief and whatnot, and sat down and gave him a lot of really great advice. And I know that the police chief has talked to all the communities around us that have marijuana facilities and he is actually, I don't want to speak for him, but his concerns seem to be quite alleviated, so I'll let him speak for himself, but it, their initial reaction doesn't seem to be the current reaction. We've been working with town council, as we all know, this board has talked about this exhaustively, but this is the first time we're actually having a formal public hearing. There's been a lot of meetings to review the drafts and we've been trying to incorporate feedback as it comes up. So let's get really to what it is. Massachusetts has received over $122 million in tax revenue for the first two years. There's a tax on it and there's also a local options tax, so that's where the towns start to see a benefit. And I know, you've probably all heard the news that in December 2021, the state actually received more money from cannabis than, halfway through the year than they had from liquor for the first time. So obviously that's a trend we're seeing throughout the state. Here's a little snapshot of some of the communities around us and then some other communities that we were able to find in the state that seemed smaller and, you know, more Foxborough-like. I didn't want to compare to like a Marlboro or, you know, a Salem where they really aren't Foxborough, but these are some of the community, the revenues that the towns have received, you know, Sharon being most notable up there and Plainville, they started later, so they have less, but you know, you're seeing sort of the impact there. So that's the main reason I think that the selectmen said, you know what, this is something that the residents should decide, because this is a lot of money to leave on the table. We also did move somewhat quickly because we didn't want to, we feel that the competition is getting more and more stiff and there's even some concerns that, you know, some, not every marijuana retailer is going to survive. We don't, I mean, I don't know, we don't know that, but that's what we're sort of hearing, so like we want to maybe get in before the market starts to go down, if it's going to go down. So what can the town do? This is a heavily regulated state, whatever, process. The town can, can do some form of regulation, you know, their local control, but we can't go too crazy, we can't add extra setbacks and whatnot, we can't make it so hard that they couldn't comply. So, but we can't, and we could pass a bylaw limiting the number of marijuana establishments to 20 or more, to fewer than 20%, but that is not what's being proposed right now. That would require a ballot and whatnot, so we're just not taking that on and I'll get into what can be done. So concerns and considerations and sort of what we've been talking about. We don't want any marijuana in and around uptown Foxborough, we're trying to be sensitive to residential areas. The one note is that under state law, marijuana establishment can't be within 500 feet of a pre-existing public or private school. We did look into it, it cannot be, that distance cannot be increased, so that's something that had been asked. We originally thought we could only have one marijuana retailer, but because we have 10 package stores, we could actually have two. If that number went up to 11 package stores, then it could go up to three. So at that point, you know, we, but the current bylaw we have written limits it to two, so, but we would, if we might want to, if the town of Foxborough, if they adopted this, wanted to then go ahead and limit it to two, it would have to be a ballot in addition to this action. And we just kind of wanted to do it sort of piecemeal to see where our time should be. If we, we can't prohibit delivery, one of the things that we had in there is no delivery in town, but it turns out you can't do that, people could be getting deliveries right now and turns out, that's one of the things. We could prohibit our retailers for delivering to our residents, but that doesn't seem wise because outside resident, deliveries could come, so that was just sort of a conservative approach to it. So here's an example of a process. What would happen is if this did pass a town meeting, then the Board of Selectmen and the planning board, we'd each adopt regulations, kind of like our special permit regs, but traditionally what you'd see is an applicant would meet with the administration, then you start working on a host agreement and then you start negotiating. This is another towns process that they try to lay out, you know, a strict format, but obviously you're going to negotiate. One of the things we're thinking of doing is actually putting out, you know, sort of saying we have two licenses and we're seeking applicants and it'll be sort of a, everybody submit at once and we kind of figure out what, you know, what we can do. We haven't yet looked into how we've done it, but we've seen other communities do that, so we might approach it that way. So we sort of get the highest and best user at once, we can really consider the locations. The host community does have quite a bit of latitude, that said, you can't be unfair, you have to negotiate in good faith. Once the host community agreement is approved by the Board of Selectmen, then they file with the Cannabis Control Commission to get a, let's see, what is it, a provisional license and at that point is when they can come to, they would come to the planning board for a special permit and any other local permits. Only if they get local permits can they get a license from the state and then at that point would they get their license. So right now we're looking at two retail establishments, as I said, that's based on the number of package stores. There's no limit on cultivation, but again, that would also be, you know, special permit and reviewed by the community. We are not proposing any social consumption, that is something that's being discussed right now, where you actually like... That is something that's being discussed right now, where you actually like create like a marijuana cafe, and you go hang out, and you, you know, you smoke your weed or drink your, I don't know. But that's not on the table for this right now. That's not something we're doing. I don't even think it's allowed in the state yet, but that's, that, if, if it's allowed in the state, it would not automatically be allowed in, under this zoning. Um, and like I said, delivery, we would not be prohibiting that because we can't. The map is also on the table over there, but here's a overview of the map. It's, uh, basically up on the Route 1 area and then down around, um, like, uh, the sort of industrial areas near 95. So that's the proposed locations. Next step is a town meeting vote on May 9th. And then if it passes, like I said, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen would adopt regulations. And then we know that the police chief wants to tighten up our public smoking rules, so then he would make sure that, you know, it already isn't allowed, but to really make sure it's enforceable. And then we would likely issue a request for proposals to seek the best financial package and location for the communities. So that is pretty much it. I know this board has heard this ad nauseam. I don't know if anybody, I know you all aren't necessarily here for this, but, um, if you have any questions?
No questions. I think no one here has any questions, obviously. But I did want to say, we have a good number of people here in, in attendance tonight, that, uh, that's pretty good background, uh, for folks who haven't, you know, maybe seen or read anything about this particular article here in Foxborough yet. And you may be seeing something similar, if not identical, at town meeting. Right? So, I mean, that, that gives you a little bit of background. What I want to say is, so why is this process going through and being steered by Planning Board? Well, it's not really being steered by the Planning Board. You know, no one at this table put this on the town meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen supported this article and made a decision to put it on the warrant, and Paige kind of explained why that is. Uh, the reason it's going through this board is because fundamentally, it's a zoning article. Now, it's a little bit of a hybrid because there are some regulatory matters and issues that are folded into it that normally wouldn't be in straight zoning. But it is essentially a zoning article, and as such, would require a two-thirds majority vote at town meeting. So if anything, anyone was wondering about that. As I said, I don't think there was any real advocacy here by members of, uh, this board seated at this table. But I will say, we spent a lot of time over the past six weeks, maybe eight weeks, working and reworking this zoning. Mainly because it would be irresponsible of us to do anything but. And, uh, I personally don't really have a, a strong disposition whether this passes or not at town meeting, but I am very confident, if it does, that the zoning will be in place in this article, uh, to give the town the ability to responsibly regulate this commercial activity. So I just wanted to put that out there before we get going. And I think that's, you know, very important to know. I'm sure you, you all have, um, uh, things to say about it, and certainly will hear it. But the article is what the article is. The Selectmen closed the warrant on Tuesday night. And, uh, the only way to change anything in it at this point would be live, do it live on town meeting floor.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Little disclaimer.
That was an excellent summary, Jeff. Thank you. Um, any questions, comments?
No.
Anything from the public?
I answered them all, huh?
It's her birthday, so she is appreciative. If you, if you're going to speak, if you could come up, so you can either do the podium or the table and just state your name and address, please?
I'm Mark Small from 111 South Street. And I just had a question about when you were, um, being briefed by the police from Brookline. Did they discuss social impacts of these retail operations in a given town?
I actually can't answer that question because I was on medical leave during that.
They, and by social impacts, do you mean like, um, home, the, the, what do you call it? The value of homes and crime and that type of thing?
More crime or disruption, social disruption?
They basically said that was, so I can say that crime was a non-factor. They were surprised about that.
And actually, the, the home, sorry, to interrupt, the, the, um, home values went up by 7%.
I think, Mark, in fairness, probably it might be a little early for some of those judgments at this point.
Well, they have the, I mean, they've done the research. Brookline was right at the beginning, so, yeah, they, there haven't been.
I know, like initially, they had some trouble because that, that was one of the first that opened, so they, I know they had a lot of lines. You know, they were dealing with crowds up front. But I know they said that since now that it's spread out and you're not seeing those crowds, it, it's minimal of, if any, impact, really. They're not having the problems around there. Specific others, like, I didn't know if you were talking about, you know, sort of trickle downs and whatnot. I don't have that specific answer. But I know, like, around the operation, it's not causing any disruptions. And I know the police really, I think they have four, and they're just not even really having a problem with them.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the question. Anybody else?
I have a note here. It didn't hurt, hurt the town, and they did not see a pickup in crime. They're, and they're actually adding another one. So that's someone who was at the meeting, so.
If you could just come up and state your name and address, please?
Matt Noon, 110 South High Street. Um, I'm a wellness teacher at the Ahern Middle School, and I remember the day that they legalized marijuana in the state, and it was tough as an educator to, uh, deal with that as far as an education and, and, I'm just curious, I'll keep it really short. Is any of this money at all, like I saw the profit, is there any of it going to go directly back to education? To the schools? Is there a way we can incorporate that so that it does go back and we can?
I think you have to do a motion on the town meeting floor. But that reminds me almost of like what happened with like the meals tax, right? And the hotels tax where it was earmarked.
We can't make any changes to the town warrant. So that would have to be something that gets brought up on town meeting floor. But honestly, my recommendation is that would come secondary to a passing.
Well, I think that's bigger people than me, to be honest. I'm just asking the question.
No, it's a good question. It's a very fair question.
Yeah, it's a selectman decision.
Could be, though. Lee?
Lee Nichols, 24 Wall Street. I mean, I've lived in this town a long time, and you said that this whole process was like you're rushing to do it. You know, you were saying like you were hurrying to, and you said that the, the ratio, uh, to pot shops or the, whatever this is, is like, you have so many liquor stores, there's so many. I'm saying, I'm saying, do we really need this? If you're only going to have two, and you can go to Plainville, and you can go to the Mansfield, and you can go to these. I mean, do we really need to deal with all this extra stuff? I know, I know the revenue, everybody's thinking revenue. But I know my taxes haven't gone down at all. So I'm saying that if this money's going to go anywhere, and I don't know where it's going, I'd just like to, I'd just like to know a little bit more about where all the cash and everything's going.
We, we don't.
That'll be a town meeting discussion.
I'm, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot.
No, it's just we don't have, we don't have the answer to that.
Yeah, I know. I'm just raising some questions.
Yeah, those are good questions to ask on the town meeting floor.
But I think it's safe to say your taxes won't be going down.
You never know. You never know. Anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Are we all set?
Yep. Go ahead.
Then I'd make a motion that, uh, we close the public hearing on the zoning article for marijuana commerce.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to make a positive recommendation?
I'll make a motion to make a positive recommendation for a warrant article to change the code of the town of Foxborough, section 162-7, and zoning bylaw, section 7.5.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you guys have any reasons? You know I always need a bullet point or two for my letter.
Well, I, I thought the chairman will be making a report at town meeting on that.
Yeah, but I write it.
That's lovely to know. Well, you know, due to the, the, the research that was done to support the lack of negative impact on the town, to, you know, meet the needs of applicants who have come forward.
Paige, I would just reiterate what I had said. You know, uh, should this pass muster with voters, that we feel very confident this is a
A positive.
A responsible framework, regulatory framework for moving forward.
That's a good one.
And I think also that, you know, we, we took a very cautious approach when this was first brought to us in 2018, and the town voted because there were so many unknowns and it, there wasn't tight structure around it. And, you know, in the past five years, that has changed significantly.
Thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Bessie, would you like to come back? Yeah, we got to let him back.
Thank you, folks, for coming. I mean, it seems kind of anticlimactic, actually.
Well, they're not here for that, Jeff. They're here for the next one.
Oh, yeah.
Well, those people were. Thank you, bye.
There is a sign-in sheet that was being passed around. I'm not sure where it is, but if you haven't signed in for the meeting, please, uh, sign in.
Oh, it's right there. And I'll just set the stage for this, if I may, and Stefan, if you guys want to come up. So as we all know, there's 29 Wall Street being developed. You all noticed that, the 25, 50 apartments, um, and then 4,600 square feet in the front for retail, uh, commercial, non-residential. So, um, Stefan contacted us and mentioned that he had a childcare facility interested in the site. We took a look at the zoning, and even, it's allowed by right, but it was just decided based on the level of interest that was, um, and sort of the change of use. Um, it seemed important to have the public be notified and to do this through a process. So, um, that's why we're here. So we do, we do have a public hearing scheduled to allow the folks to be notified of this, and, um, we have the, the team here to talk about it.
But just to reiterate, this is, this isn't a, a right that's allowed?
It's a by right use.
So this is a, they have the right to do it regardless of what we say?
Right. You're pretty much looking at it from a, um, you know, like, for site plan is, site plan, so special permit is when it's discretionary, and, um, that's the mixed use, the residential, whatnot. But childcare facility is clearly a why. It's actually, childcare facilities are actually why across the entire town, like even R40 and whatnot. So they're allowed everywhere. Um, and there are some protections associated with them under state law. But, um, yes, so this is a site plan. The Planning Board typically for that looks at the layout, um, circulation, sort of, you can't really say no to it, but you can make sure it works. So that makes sense.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is there any comments from police and fire on?
Well, it's a public hearing. We need to open it first, which we didn't do.
Motion to open the public hearing. Remind a modification of Wall Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So do we want to have, um, let's have?
Let's have Stefan's presentation.
Yes.
Hi. Nice to see you guys.
Nice to see you as well.
Um, so I'm actually just going to sort of intro this, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Crystal Tullis with Story Heights Montessori. So, uh, basically, as Paige just said, it's a, it's a, it's a use, it's a by right use childcare facility. Um, I think after Crystal's presentation, I think some or a lot of your concerns will be met. Um, just a very small boutique childcare center. It's not a big, sort of bright horizons, um, uh, childcare center with hundreds of kids in and out. So I think we have a plan for traffic and drop-off, pickup, those sort of things. But I'll let Crystal sort of bring you through her business, which she can speak to better than I can.
Sure. So hi, I'm Crystal Tullis. It's nice to be here with all of you today. Uh, I am the owner and founder of Story Heights Montessori Childcare Center. We have two current campuses, one in Norfolk, that was where we first started, and one in Rhythm that we opened this past September. Um, we have really great outstanding reputation in both communities, and our wait lists are really long, which is why I approached Stefan about opening a third campus. Um, our business model is a boutique vibe childcare center. It's not a, you know, a large Kinder Care, bright horizons. Um, we do the same model in every location that we go to, which consists of, uh, children zero to six. We are licensed by the state through the Department of Early Education and Care for nine infants, or, excuse me, seven infants, nine toddlers, and 20 preschool students. That means also that we have nine full staff at all times. So, um, I actually went through, as we were talking about parking and, you know, what that means, what the impact to the city would mean. Um, and at our Norfolk location, that is 35 families, and in our Rhythm location, it's 37 families. So during our drop-off and our pickup times, that means you will have about 30, between 35 and 37 families coming on, on site. So one car per family. Um, and then you'll have nine full-time staff that are parked at all time. Um, this site has 22 parking spots, and so, um, per the bylaws, we need four parking spots per, uh, nine children. So that was an additional nine spots that we needed since we have 36, and then the nine full-time staff. So that's 18 of 22 that we would have. Our early morning, our main, um, time that you'll have circulation on the parking lot is in the morning. Our drop-off time, our, our normal day is from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Uh, we have early care that families can add on à la carte from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. Our, um, after-school can also be added on à la carte from 4:00 to 5:30. So also using real-time data from our Norfolk and our Rhythm locations, of those 35 families, we have 20 families at both locations that utilize the early drop-off care, and they come anytime between 7:20 and 7:40 if they're running late. Um, everybody comes in, it's a one to two minute. Because of COVID and even pre-COVID with the Montessori style, you don't have long drop-offs. It's, it's hi mom, bye mom, see you later mom, have a great day. You know, mom's going to work, child's going to work, and so it's quick. So parents are parking, they're pulling in, they're walking in, walking their child in, saying goodbye, going back to their car. So it's a one to three-minute, you know, kind of interaction there. And then the other of those 35, the other 15 come from 8:55 until 9:15. So it's staggered. It's not everybody coming at one time. And we talked through the site plan with the department heads that there's multiple egresses in and out of this property so that it's not all going to be turning. Um, we proposed to the town, and from what you see, that everyone takes a right onto Wall Street, but then after we talked with all of the department heads at the pre-meeting, it was kind of determined that it might be best not to do that because then you create more problems for Wall Street. So it might be best, you know, left to your discretion whether it, people have the opportunity to either go right or left coming out of that.
I think the, and the fire chief and the police chief both agreed that there's such a low impact because it's staggered, the drop-off and the pickup. You've got 20 families coming between, you know, whatever it is, 7:15 and
7:20.
And then 15 coming between 8:30 and 9 o'clock?
That's right, yeah.
So it's, it's really staggered. They're not all coming at one time, and he just, they both just looked at us and said that's just not, that's not a big impact. I'd rather you see and let them go right or left and not create something that doesn't need to be created just by making everybody go right. So we, we altered the plan that you see to, to say, just let them go whichever, whichever way they're going.
It might be better because you could actually get stuck in the traffic, drop-off traffic when you're leaving.
Yeah.
If they all go in the same direction. But everyone will enter by the same entrance.
Yeah, so everyone will enter here. Here's Wall Street, obviously. Everyone will enter here and
We can't see it.
Sorry. Cars will enter here, and they will all have to pull into a spot to park, drop their kid off, get back in their car. They can back out and go back out this way and go right or left, or they can come around the building and come out this way. So both options. I imagine most people will pull in and just pull out the same way they came in. But, you know, we have, we have that option.
And another thing to note is that what we're doing with the proposed architecture drawings is we do have to have gross motor area. And so I just want to point out that children won't be walking because what we've done with half of that square footage and, and got approved by the state licenser is an indoor-outdoor, um, build inside that building for gross motor time. So we won't be walking kids to a park or in that parking lot or anything like that. They will be contained to that building through the whole day.
Okay. In reviewing the package, I've got a, uh, two letters, one from the police chief and one from the fire department, and they both said they have no issues.[1781.48] I do have one question I would like to bring up. You are going to assure us that there will be no street parking and walking in of children from Wall Street?
Right. So what we proposed is that we can put really whatever rules we want in the parent contract so that they know that this is what is required of them, and we can continue to reiterate that as new families come in.
Is that something?
It has to be safe and secure.
Of course.
That is something you would like to see, that parents don't park in the spots on Wall Street? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about, anything from the health department?
No.
Gabby?
Uh, no, they were, they were part of the, the meeting that we had with the, the professional staff, and they had no concerns because there, there's no, no food preparation that will occur there. The, the food is brought from home for the children.
We don't provide any meals or snacks. Parents provide everything.
Paige or Gabby, any concerns of yours or questions?
No, actually, we, you know, when we first heard, I mean Stefan can attest to it, when I first heard about it, I was like, this is not gonna go over well, you know, I don't know. And then the further we looked into it, I mean, first of all, it's a big why, a by-right use, but also when we met with the, with the development, the department team, it really was, you know, realizing that this is different, that we all think of, I think, the more higher generating. And I think with the controls, you know, with a, a Montessori, where they have contracts and whatnot, I think they can actually control the access, and they stipulate, you know, when people are coming and going, and that, you know, you, you could actually like kick someone out, I assume, if they don't follow the rules. So...
This is, yeah, and again, this is a much more benign use than we could also have there by right. It could be some kind of restaurant or otherwise, and I think we talked through that as well as, I mean, that could be a, a much larger impact on the traffic and the number of people coming in and out of that site on a, on a regular basis.
Did we talk to any of the towns that they're currently located in to get any?
We did not.
Okay.
I mean, how long have you been in Rhythm?
We started in Norfolk in 2015, and then our, but it was an existing childcare center, so we just kinda came in. It wasn't a change of use, and then we started in Rhythm this past September.
And what makes Montessori different from a regular daycare?
It's really just the philosophy of the way children learn. So Maria Montessori was an Italian teacher in the eighteen hundreds, and that's where her name, that's where the name comes from. And it was her belief that children can do more than we think they can. And so that's the way that they learn. Teachers act as guides to the child, where they learn, so... And I was a layperson to Montessori as well. My younger children went through traditional preschool, and then I happened to stumble upon this childcare center opportunity in Rhythm, I mean in Norfolk, and then met a director who had been in the Montessori field for twenty-five years, and I just fell in love just with the way that she interacted with my children, which is why I got passionate about starting it. And really, instead of one teacher having one lesson planned for twenty children, the twenty children get to set their own lesson plan for the day with the way that they pick their works, with math and science and English and art and all of those sorts of things. And the teachers act as guides to come alongside each child. And so if a child is interested in math, but their favorite thing is dinosaurs that day, then they will use dinosaurs for that child to teach math. And so that starts at the, even at the infant level, and there's a whole thing. So we send all of our teachers through Montessori training through EMI, and there's, there's a whole, it's a whole field. But that's like for the layman's term of how it's a little bit different.
That was very helpful because I wondered that. And you mentioned that there's a contract.
Mm-hmm, there is a contract.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so our infant and our toddlers are signed to a thirty-day contract. So you put one month deposit, I don't know if you want this in the gritty, but it's an enrollment deposit that secures your spot.
Yeah, and what's in the contract? Like what type of things?
That I will pay, you know, on time, and, and we can really put anything in there. I don't, Norfolk and Rhythm has not required me to put anything like this, so this would be a first in these things. But, you know, if you're late, it's a minute, a dollar a minute charge. There's just things like that that we stipulate within that contract.
And we could put like the parking and...
Yeah, that's where you would, yeah.
Put those rules.
Yeah.
The campus rules.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
Yeah. I know it's probably premature and speculative at this point, but what's your sense on vehicles exiting in the morning from the residential buildings for work? And, you know, again, I suppose until you actually have your tenants there, you won't really know. But I think that's something you have to take into consideration.
To be honest with you, I couldn't remember off the top of my head. I remember we did a full traffic study. I don't know what was, I mean, we could, we could pull that back up. I could certainly get it to you. You probably have it.
I do remember.
Yeah.
You know, I'm Nancy, I live on twenty-four Wall Street.
Nancy, we need to let them finish their portion of the presentation first, and then we'll open up.
So to answer Chris, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how COVID's impacted people's lifestyles, people working from home more. I would, I don't know.
So I think where we would be coming from is just having some confidence that there may need to be some flexibility on your part in dealing with either your families or your tenants, and somehow, you know, make this all work, or it may not be an issue at all. But I mean, I can't really speak to it.
How can you regulate it though? You can't tell people when to leave for work.
Well, it could be a problem, you know. I'm just saying.
Yeah, you may want to readdress what you're looking at for your traffic flow.
Right.
Where you were proposing as, I didn't even think of it until Jeff brought it up, that was gonna be one of the main arteries coming out of the building, the main building.
Well, just looking at the, the site plan, I'm assuming it would be the main artery.
Right.
I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah, I think, you know, my recollection is that a project this size, which I know seems large where it is, but it's not a huge, it's not a huge development, you've got people coming and going at such different times. People don't all just wake up at seven-thirty and leave the parking lot at eight and create a... It's so filtered and staggered that it, it really doesn't have the impact that people think it does.
You know, one thing, because the, the apartment people are gonna park up top in your photo, is...
They're gonna park from here back.
Right. You know, so the question becomes, you know, could we require that all of the, the parents, the drop-off folks, have to go behind the building and exit out the other?
I, I think it might be, that's why I say it might be premature and somewhat speculative. But I, I think there has to be some, some willingness, you know, and we need to...
No question about it. If there's, if there's some kind of, if there's a, a relief valve that we can trigger to help, you know, mitigate a, a potential problem.
Because it's gonna be a problem for you, and it's gonna be a problem for you.
Hundred percent. Yeah, no, I agree. Absolutely.
Because the apartment people would more than likely come out towards, towards Co-Cassett. So if you, you know, be flexible to shoot your people behind the building.
Sure.
I think you could maybe, it sounds like one of those conditions that we do for lighting, you know, where it says the planning board reserves the right to require, you know, tra, so like, something like, to your point, once it starts to flow and to see how it goes, because, you know, things have changed. People aren't commuting like they used to. So it is a little bit different, and, you know, so we don't know exactly. Like, a traffic study might be different at this point.
And what would be your sequencing for bringing this business online vis-à-vis the residential buildings?
So for her operation, we would be trying to get her in that building, operational first of September. Yeah.
Or as close to right after Labor Day as possible.
We've talked about some of these things with Scott, too, as far as, you know, around safety and whatnot, because we will still have, I mean, there'll be sort of more finishing touches going on in the...
There will still be a construction.
But it will still be, we will not have occupancy yet for the residential building. That'll be October, November.
So we have, Scott, did you wanna speak?
Yes, I, I was just gonna ask him.
You have to come up.
You have to come up. Come on, time for the dance.
And then we have Janet Kennedy. She would like to speak at some point, once we get to the public. Just saying that so I don't forget.
Just to re-illiterate what Stefan said, right now, they have approval for a retail, which could be a restaurant. The occupancy load for a restaurant of that magnitude could be three hundred occupants. So there's a lot more traffic flow going in and out at a continuous amount of time. So this, this project, although I'm not endorsing it, is of less impact on traffic, in my opinion. So...
Agreed. I just feel that if, with those two pockets...
Yes.
And it's going to be pretty much in the time that people would be leaving in the morning for work, if they are going to be going to offices at this point.
That was brought up at the professional meetings, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions from the board? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Why don't we take the woman on the screen first?
Yes. Janet, do you wanna go unmute yourself? I look, yeah, you're unmuted, I think.
You're on mute.
Am I?
No, now you're back. You're with us.
No, I'm not.
We can hear you.
Okay, I, I live at twenty-five Co-Cassett Street, and that building is right, you know, back, I, I can see it in front of my house, well, by my, in front of where my driveway is. My question is, are you gonna have any playgrounds back there? Because I know some of the other places around have playgrounds, plus being where the train is, you know, little boys and little girls could go over the fence, and there could be a very bad, something happening there.
Yeah, the answer is no, there will be no outdoor playground because there's no place to put a playground, and it's a liability on us to try to force that. So that's why we were purposeful with the architect to build an, an indoor slash outdoor. We're bringing the outdoors inside, into the building.
Now, you're gonna have people watching to make sure nobody gets out of the plate, your building to go look at the trains?
Yes, there's, there's no way for the children to, to get out. They, we will be licensed by the state and meet all of the employment regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you.
Come up, state your name and address.
You have to go to the...
You gotta go to the...
Sure. You gotta go to the mic.
You gotta go to the microphone.
I wanna use this first. I'm Nancy Nichols.
You need to go to the mic.
You can take that.
You can take it with you, if you like.
I'm Nancy Nichols. I live on twenty-four Wall Street, directly from the retail office building that's being proposed as a daycare, and then also the apartment complex.
Okay, on this... Okay, first of all, no one is talking about safety at all.
She has to get the mic.
We live on this road.
You need to speak into the mic. I'm sorry. You can balance it anywhere you need to.
Okay. We live on this road. We've been here for... I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
At our very own Vama.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Okay, we've lived on, in our address, twenty-four Wall Street, which is directly from the apartment complex and the retail office space, you know, changing over to a daycare possibly. All right. The parking spaces, okay, the original for the apartment building is one and a half spaces per unit. Okay, that's proposed, you know, back on, four years ago. All right, so most people that are gonna be renting this from the apartment is gonna have two cars. Okay, there's not allotment of enough cars for the apartment complex to begin with. Okay, the daycare, okay, you're proposing parking spaces over here. There's no way you can control on-street parking. You know people from the daycare are gonna park on the street. All right, so now you have fifty-plus cars leaving in the morning, also returning in the evening. We have the post office in and out all day. People come in the morning, first thing before they go to work. Let me see, what else do we have here? We have the cut-through traffic, both directions. We have all the apartment people leaving at, you know, scattered times. We don't know that. So you're talking so many people on Wall Street. We have this curb here, so dangerous, I can't even tell you how bad that is. Okay, the entrance to the daycare is right on that curb, okay? My biggest thing is the safety of the children is number one. I mean, I can't even imagine, I mean, this is my worst nightmare, honestly. You know, I was looking forward to see what was gonna go in the retail, never expecting a daycare. Safety for the children? I mean, my God.
How is, how, why are you concerned from a safety standpoint? They're gonna be in the parking lot, walking into the building.
There's no way everyone is gonna park in these little spaces right there. They're gonna be on the dra, on the roadway. I'm talking about people coming and going from the apartment building. Also, when they have their children and they're leaving and they're going left or right onto Co-Cassett Street or coming up Wall Street, you have the traffic from the post office coming down. We see, we live there, right directly across. We see it. It's so dangerous, so, so dangerous. I mean, I really hope you, you know, take the time and realize how dangerous that corner is.
I just wanna clarify, we can't say no to it.
No, I realize that.
Okay.
But you don't have to say yes. You can find another location for this.
No, that's not how the laws work.
My mistake. I just feel that it is not the right location for a daycare facility with that corner.
I think four years ago, these were your arguments, when we approved this project originally, all the traffic.
No, because the daycare is gonna add forty-plus more cars coming and going, including staff. Okay, then you have the fifty apartment complex, you know, people leaving, coming and going. There's gonna be at least fifty cars, if not more.
But we can't say no.
I, I'm not saying, okay...
What, what do you want us to do if we can't?
I just wanna say the safety. I'm just saying the safety.
You're here, you can view, you can absolutely voice your concerns, but we do not, we, we said at the very beginning of this hearing, this is a use by right. That means we cannot say no to it by law.
We can condition certain things.
We can condition it, but we cannot say she cannot put a daycare there.
It's a safety thing. I'm, I'm not saying that you can say, you, you have to say, no, you can't do this. I'm saying, I'm looking at the whole picture, the safety of everybody. It's not just the daycare, it's not just the apartment, it's the people that are driving up and down Wall Street, leaving the post office. Also, the volume of traffic that is gonna be created from this between the both of them, you know, it's...
If I may address a couple of the points you brought up. One was the parking, that one and a half spaces per unit were required. That is a bylaw in the community.
Right. I, I do realize that.
And as far as the impact on the neighborhood and traffic, the letter right here from Deputy Chief Noonan states very clearly, in my opinion, it will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood. So the professionals in our community, the police, the fire, are saying they don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay.
I understand there's gonna be some congestion, and I have a concern about it as well. But I think that if we work with these people and we say that if you do things in a certain way and you get a good traffic pattern going, manage it the best you can. But we cannot tell them they're not gonna be able to do this.
Right. I, I understand that. Okay, I do understand that. My, my thing is definitely the safety of the, you know, everything.
I completely get that.
You know, it's...
As do we. Nobody wants to see anybody get hurt. Nobody wants to see anybody get grossly inconvenienced.
Okay.
I think we're all on the same page with that one. I would, I would also just, just to help, I think we set it up.
Do you have the study about the traffic from...
I don't have it with me, but I do recall them saying it was roughly four hundred-plus more cars.
I think we would have that on record if you wanna contact.
But again, the forty-six hundred square feet was already in the traffic study. So, again, like those numbers were in there. There are variations on timings, but again, to Scott's point, if you have a restaurant with, you know, two hundred, three hundred seats, or whatever it is, whatever the number would end up being.
Even if you had a hundred and fifty seats, and you turn it over three times in the course of a night.
Yeah. So again, this was looked at to some extent, and, and, you know, like, you can't case in point anything. And again, things have changed in four years, traffic patterns-wise, so we don't even know that's about. But I guess the point is, is the forty-six hundred was already accounted for in there, so...
Right.
That's a lot of cars.
No, the forty-six hundred.
No, no, I'm talking about four hundred more cars. I mean, it, it's incredible. You know, you have no idea what you're, you're getting yourself, you know, into, honestly.
It was that. I don't know if that's what it was.
You know, we've lived here for forty-plus years, and we've seen, you know, the changes, and we're fine with the changes, but the traffic flow is gonna be just incredible, coming out on Co-Cassett Street with the railroad crossing, and then you go out onto Central Street. I mean...
Well, we can, we can condition...
I think we should.
And revisit traffic situations as far, as far as anything we do moving forward.
And I'd wanna do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you know, Nancy, it's not like you can't be a player in that process. You know, in the future, if there are issues.
And we would want you to come here. If there's issues and you're like, keep, keep in mind, they'll, you know, they've moved in, there's issues with traffic, come to us and tell us what they are and let's work out, can we rework the traffic flow or something like that?
Okay, um, just as an example, I mean, we see with the construction that's going on, what had, you know, the impact that has had. You know, my husband is in commercial construction and he knows, you know, all the, just of everything with the traffic and, I mean, it's been incredible, incredible.
None of those things were, none of those things were addressed.
Can we, can we allow all the people to comment as well?
Yeah, we have, okay, so Nancy...
I know you don't wanna hear from him.
No, no, if you're gonna speak, she needs to sit.
Yeah, there can only be one.
Okay. I'll see you at home.
Name and address for the record, sir.
Lee Nichols, twenty-four Wall Street. I'm not gonna, I know it's not gonna do any good, but I'm just saying that when we had the meeting to pass this project in the beginning, I was, thought that it was gonna be the project where they build the project and they stay on their property. Every morning I get up, six o'clock anyway, but I hear idling trucks because workers are coming to work. And this has been like this for the last few months.
What time in the morning?
Six o'clock, before start time. You have workers sitting outside, idling trucks, you have delivery trucks sitting outside. They have large loads of trusses, plywood, rental equipment. I mean, and they just sit out there and idle until someone comes and open up the gate and then they'll either unload in the street, which I've called the police, I got them on speed dial. I don't like calling the police. One, because I don't wanna slow them up, but I also think it's a waste of the police's time coming down and telling them what they should know already. But anyway, it's just been an ongoing battle and I brought this up at the meeting, what the impact was gonna be to my house, because when we started this meeting for the first time with the construction, they said there was gonna be little or no impact to anybody, but they thought my house was an apartment house. So an apartment, you rent an apartment, if you don't like the noise, you move. I own my own house. I have skin in the game. I put my kids through college. In this town, you know, I work in town. I mean, I don't work just in the town, but I work for people in the town. You know, I've been here a long time and I just seem to think that it, everything is going at a much faster pace, you know? And I'm not happy with some of the things I'm seeing, especially with this project, because I'm in, uh, food plant construction, a lot larger than what's going on across the street and I see what's going on over there. And I'm amazed that OSHA hasn't been down there yet. They started, I mean, they were in the street, they made a mess of the street, they broke a gas line. Of course, they checked the two apartment houses to make sure they were clear when the gas was leaking in the street. Do you think anybody came and knocked on my door to see if everything was already in my house? No. My wife was home. You know, so it's just some of the little things. Plus the cell phone that I have with pictures of all kinds of close calls where my wife's customers had to dodge large trucks and the amount of business that her shop had to endure during her season when she's open, not being able to access the parking on the street. And we would go to the police and I went to the assistant, um, the, was assistant to the manager, I've gone, I've gone to the building department and everybody says, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna call you back. Nobody's called me back, nobody's done anything. And I don't know what you're gonna do at this point, but it just seems like I'm, it's falling on deaf ears and I'm gonna have to live with whatever you guys put across the street. And I would hope you would never put a restaurant there with three hundred cars on Wall Street. I wouldn't think you would consider that, even if the space was available. I mean, three hundred cars, I mean, really, I mean, you know? Cause, you know, after this, I'm gonna run for one of your positions after this, if something bad goes on. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Lee, I'd like to touch on one thing. If you've got any concerns, the way things are going on the site, from today forward, the gentleman sitting in the back of the room is the building commissioner? I, well, I'm saying you would be the person he should contact.
And I have called him back. I have answered you back.
Are you the building inspector?
I am.
You are the building inspector?
I am, yes, sir, I am.
Well, guess what? If I was, if you call what you call, getting back to me is unsatisfactory. I haven't seen anything being done.
Okay, we're not gonna let that go any further.
No, I'm just saying...
Can we have other comments, please?
Thank you.
I'm fine.
Anyone else care to make a comment? Microphone? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Melud Melasipla, living on thirty-six Coacit Street, Maple Street and Coacit Corner, right? The oldest house almost in the town. And when the study was done four years ago, or when it was the first meeting, I was this first meeting about the project and I give up. Because honestly, was no way to go. Because the, uh, traffic study says the traffic will increase only one percent. One percent over hundred cars who will entering this, uh, building plus these things. I would like have you as a town do new study on the traffic. Because the first traffic, because it's only one entrance and everybody will go to ninety-five and they will go Coacit and Maple. They will go, they will not go on one forty. Right? Because this is the closest way to Boston, to work, working people who will drop the kids, go whatever, right? If you, if you're working from home, you will not using the Montessori school. I don't say about the school or retail place. The, the project was from beginning, the study of the traffic was not done right and I give up. Because nobody will tell me, oh, only one percent will increase of the traffic. From what one percent? Did any dot did the traffic? No, was done by the project manager or who knows what this is. Please go back four years ago and look at into this, thank you.
The traffic studies that are done are done by professional engineering companies and they put their, well, I know you don't think it's valid, but they put their stamp on it, they put their license on the line. So we have to take what they bring to us as being credible evidence. Anyone else?
Would be redone.
Paige, do we have the ability to request a new traffic study?
We can, but the problem is, what are you gonna do with the info?
No, no, I'm, I'm asking a question, that's all. We've already approved this project.
I mean...
Hi, my name's Sarah Jane Cassie. I live at twenty-eight Coacit Street. It basically faces Wall Street at the corner. You might have noticed the railroad things that are there now? That's me. I, I had one question about the notice that we received, actually, just to clarify. I'm a little confused because it says you're gonna review the request for a modification. Does, has that already been approved, the modification?
No, they already have approval to have a commercial facility there. They're asking for a minor modification to allow it to be a daycare, which is allowed by right. What we have control over again is the conditions that we can put on it, but we cannot...
Okay, so this isn't really what this was all, I, I misunderstood that part, okay. I'd also, I would like to invite you to sit at my house, really, for a few hours and watch the interaction because of the age of the intersection there, at Coacit and Wall Street and Maple Avenue, which is almost across as well. Because of the age of it, it's developed into a very strange sort of asterisk and we have seen, we've been there for thirty-four years and we've seen some very strange things happen. The lady who took the turn up the railroad tracks, for example? The people who stop at the stop sign, which is required to be pushed back onto Wall Street because of the train tracks, who feel that once they've stopped, they can turn on Coacit Street. And I've been recording, it's an average of three honks a day from the people tearing from the common, they're so glad to get off that common. They go tearing down the straightaway, which isn't posted anyway. And people pull out in front and then the honk happens. It's very complex. I realize you can do this, I would ask you not to. I, I, I think you'll be uncomfortable, I really, I would be if I were in your position. I love Montessori, I sent my kids that way, I think it's great. I think your facility looks fantastic. It's just not in a good place. I, I, I would really be uncomfortable, I'm too old now, but sending my little ones there. So that's what I wanted to have on record.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela Avery. I live at thirty-two Main Street, which is not even near there, but I just have a question. You have two other Montissories, do they have playgrounds?
They do.
And yet this one does not?
That's correct.
You're going to confine children all day?
No, they won't be confined. We're bringing the outdoors in with a special...
How do you bring the outdoors in?
With a special door that we're bringing out, so fresh air comes in, a lot of extra windows that will go out, uh, as much light as possible that we can get and we'll be turfing it, the same outdoor experience that we can bring in. Parents will decide if they want their children to do that. I'm not doing anything and it's something the state is allowing as well.
Do they get sunshine and do they get breeze?
Absolutely, because we have to meet all of the EDC regulations.
Inside a building? I work at a daycare, we take our children out twice a day, um, depending on the weather, of course. And I couldn't imagine putting one of my, not my children, cause that wasn't around then, but my grandchildren, I couldn't imagine confining them inside of a building all day long, whether you make it look like the outside or not. I just don't like that.
Angela, I'm gonna stop you on this because we're going down a path that really has nothing...
Well, it's, you're gonna confine children, what...
That has nothing to do with the permitting process.
And you know what, shame on those parents.
Okay, thank you.
And I, one more thing, I wanna know, you don't have to answer it because I don't, don't want you to, how do you do a traffic study when there's nothing to study? Just saying.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'll be brief.
Oh, it's Vanna.
Are you gonna hold the sign up for us?
Yeah, go on. I'm good at it.
You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Up now you're not.
You have to stand up and cheer, but...
You held it well.
Steve Anberg at twelve Maple Ave, so I'm not directly across, but I will be in part of that traffic pattern then once everything is said and done, regardless of what's in that building. And all I wanna do is just reiterate, I think a traffic study really needs to be done again and include when freight trains come through. Cause there's a freight train that comes through at eight-twenty every morning, because I dropped my granddaughter off at a, at a, at a bus stop on mechanic and that train's going right through when the bus stops. So if you're gonna have kids and people coming and going in those hours, you better take that into consideration because that's gonna bind everything up.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that, sorry.
And I think, um, someone said, yeah, they're gonna take a right and they're gonna go left up Maple to get up to ninety-five. I'm right at the head of Maple, I'm right at the top of Maple Ave. And you can even see the, um, post office traffic. Those guys come across Maple Ave and come down to Wall. And so it, we're a cut-through and this is just gonna make it even worse. And the sidewalks are terrible there. And so if I'm, when I'm taking my walk, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in danger, even more than I am today. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I think, um, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the minor modification of twenty-nine Wall Street.
I'll second that.
Before you do, that's fine, second, but just one question I have, because I did not sit on this original, um, application. You show in your traffic flow, all, you know, circling around and exiting on that, is that also an entrance?
No.
It's only an exit?
Correct.
Is that a roadway servicing other properties up back?
This one?
Yeah.
It's for this gentleman here.
It's, it's an auto body.
So is that a private driveway?
Yes, that's my driveway.
Yep, okay.
And I have tenants in there and parts being delivered with big trucks and that's what I was just gonna say, you know? And this is all complete, cause...
Um, can you, can you come to a microphone, please, sorry?
And just state your name and address, please.
Hi, so, uh, my name is Joe Burnett and I'm in the back there and I have tenants there now, electricians and plumbers and parts for my business being delivered, bunch of big trucks being, you know, in and out, people going all the time. And now you said that, you know, everything's gonna be open, you know, daycare's gonna be open, you know, people can leave in and out and tenants will...
Just to exit.
What if it starts blocking and all of a sudden, you know, people start blocking the roadways or whatnot and I won't get deliveries or my tenants won't be able to leave or whatnot? What's, I mean, I just don't understand how, what you're planning on...
I don't see that happening, Joe, but I'm, like I said, I mean, we're, we're gonna be neighbors, so I'm, I'm happy to work with you with all this stuff and I've...
Who owns the road?
We do.
I have the right-of-way, so...
Okay.
And, yeah, so I've...
It's a right-of-way, yeah.
I have had tenants there a long time, so I just don't want them to lose them or have, you know, issues with them, so...
Yeah, I totally get that and we're here to be friendly neighbors, you know, we're not trying to create a problem. I don't, that's not our, our goal here. And I have been watching and paying attention to flow and stuff. I mean, I don't, there's not, you don't have a ton of activity up and down that street. It's not a ton, so I, it's very intermittent and this is very...
It's, it's not a ton, because now, now the project is basically being built and half the time, everything's being, you know, with trailers blocked, so people can't and I always have to postpone and now make, you know, appointments on, because of this project, you know, to deliver the parts either next day or whatnot because of all this stuff. So that's why, what you're saying now is, it's not true. So I will have a lot, I always did, so, and same thing with my tenants, you know, they have to now adjust because of this project, you know, the flow of whatever's happening there now, so I just don't want any issues, you know, further down the road.
Just like we can put a condition and we could put a condition in that if there's an issue with that road...
Right, okay.
You raise it.
It's all gonna be contingent, the conditioning is gonna be contingent upon traffic flow.
Okay.
Cause we understand.
And we could ask the traffic patterning be adjusted accordingly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, no interest in causing you any interruption or problem with your operations. I mean, we're widening the road, um, her, her operation is very controlled and you know, you know, the, the times of pickup and drop-off are very controlled, it's not just random, so hopefully that's helpful as well, but, um, you know, we're...
You're also taking the human factor.
Excuse me, that's not what we're doing right now, guys.
All right.
All right, Stefan, I have one question.
Well...
The public hearing's already been closed. But I do have one question, when you said you are widening the road, would it be possible, I don't know if you've got enough land or enough room to make a dedicated exit lane that would not encroach on his business on the back?
I don't...
I don't think so.
I'm asking, I'm just asking the simple question.
What's the green? What's the light green between you and the post office?
Uh, it's a little jog, we have a transformer pad right here.
Okay. Okay, motion to approve the, motion to approve...
But you didn't close the public hearing.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We didn't vote for it.
No, you made a motion, not vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve minor modification, twenty-nine Wall Street with the conditions of revisiting with...
We review the...
Do you wanna go through them?
Could you revisit what we wrote down?
All right, let's see, between the two of us, I have no parking on Wall Street, the contract with the parents will reflect this. The planning board reserves the right to require traffic mitigation or to review traffic, that's a general one. And then Gabby had a good suggestion about, um, that perhaps set up a meeting for like six months to review traffic, or not a meeting, but to like to, to reexamine the traffic flow in six months, once the apartment complex is open and just kinda make sure that there's no, you know, no concerns or whatnot.
Basically, a year from now. It's not gonna open till October, so.
September, September.
Department will be ready for it.
Okay.
A year from now.
Is there anything else, Gabby, that I didn't cover?
Yeah, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.